I'm Dan Yarres, Executive Director. We want to send a special thanks out to Bryan Municipal Utilities, Bryan Times, and Stony Ridge Winery. This broadcast will be replayed at various times on VMU Channel Number Four. Those times may be found on Channel Number Three and VMU's Facebook page. Our panelists for this evening's Meet the Candidates Forum include Bob Golding, the Bryan Area Chamber of Commerce First Vice President, and our Governmental Affairs Chair, along with Assistant Editor of the Bryan Times, Ron Osborne. At this time, I will turn it over to them.
Thanks. First of all, I want to say thank you, guys, for coming and participating in the forum. And also, thank you for your willingness to participate in public service. Not always easy, so we appreciate that. We have a couple of quick intro guidelines, questions. Might start with Michael there, if you want to just kind of briefly tell us a little bit about yourself.
Absolutely. Hello, I'm Michael LaRoe. I work here in Bryan at Dabbling. I'm an inside-service technician. It's myself and my fiancee that live here in Bryan. And I'm running for City Council at large.
My name is Jim Cozablek, and I am currently co-owner of Fluid Handling Dynamics here in Bryan, Ohio. I have a daughter, Alexis, and a wife, Kimberly. And I'm running for Bryan City Council at large.
I'm Denise Stallings, and I'm an attorney in private practice. I'm married to Jerry Stallings. And we have four teenagers: Jackson, who's at University of Indianapolis; Jessica, a senior at Bryan; Gabriel, a junior at Bryan; and Grace Mueller, a sophomore at Bryan. And I'm running for City Council at large.
Okay, as you notice, all three candidates are running for councilperson at large. We also have one other election going on at the same time for Council Ward Four for the Bryan City Council. But Judy Yarres is that candidate, and she is running unopposed. We are actually going to have her come up at the end of the forum and tell us why she's running again. So, but I will turn it back over to our panelists, and it's question time.
All right, so I'm just gonna start with this. And we're gonna try to mix up the order as best we can. Like, and my apologies if I don't do it totally evenly. But we'll start with Mr. LaRoe. And is your job, or any of your other commitments in terms of boards or anything of the sort, any way of a conflict with being a congressperson, or councilperson? And how will you handle that if it arises?
As it stands right now, I don't believe it's gonna be an issue. I'm fortunate to work at a great company that has been understanding so far with this process. Moving forward, I imagine they'll probably also understand if there are meetings that I need to attend to and such like that.
Jim? Being a business owner, I can do whatever I want, I guess, at that point. You know, currently, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Bryan Chamber of Commerce. That's really not gonna interfere with anything. That just gives me more insight, you know, in council, I guess. But I don't think there's gonna be any conflicts.
Well, as an attorney, I'm pretty familiar with conflicts of interest and how those work. I do serve on a couple boards. There are no conflicts, none of them do any business with the city of Bryan at this time, and I don't anticipate that. Ironically, I did just speak to the Judge North Spailiff about possibly taking court appointments here, and that is on hold at this time, so that I don't put myself in a position where I would have conflict.
Until you're recognizing that as City Council, you do pass criminal laws, and that would be a possible conflict there, please?
Well, of course, if I was representing someone in Bryan Municipal Court, yes. However, I just would decline that type of representation.
Take a minute, if you would, starting with Michael. And tell us, what's your motivation for seeking this office? What's, you know, when did you know you wanted to run? And have you ever run for any kind of elected office before?
So, I started going to council meetings about a year, year and a half ago. I saw what they were doing in the community, and I commend that. I think that's very important for people to take those roles. Takes a lot of guts, I think. When I heard that Mr. Whelan wasn't running for reelection, I saw it as an opportunity to give back to the community. I volunteered at park cleanups, community events, I've attended the council meetings, like I said. I think those are all important aspects of giving back to the community, and I want to do more. So, like I said, I've watched them achieve great things, and I want to be a part of that success. And also, at the same time, be an inspiration to a younger generation to get involved in local politics.
Denise?
Well, my passion for public service and government began very young. It was always dinner table conversation when I was growing up. My stepfather was the great-grandson of James Ashley, who was the congressperson who sponsored the Thirteenth Amendment abolishing slavery. So, that's just always been part of my upbringing. Studied political science and history, specifically with state and local government concentration in my undergraduate. It just came up, though, very suddenly. The motivation here and for this position really goes to why we chose Bryan a little over four years ago, in choosing to bring our family here and commit to this community when we came. And I just really am looking forward to the opportunity that I can do that in a position such as this. That's my motivation.
My motivation is I'm invested in Bryan. You know, I've lived in Bryan for 45 years, I've worked in Bryan for 45 years. Currently, I volunteer over 200 hours a year, you know, through the Bryan Chamber of Commerce and other organizations that bring people to Bryan. So, this was kind of my next step in moving forward and helping Bryan out as much as I can at a higher level. So, that was really my motivation. I've always had a passion for it. People have always pushed me to do it, because I am a community, you know, guy. And again, I'm invested in Bryan. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna, we're gonna run the order backwards, because Mr. LaRoe mentioned that he'd been to many council meetings. So, how many council meetings in your life do you believe you've been to, Mr. Cozablek?
Five.
In Bryan, I have not been to one yet. I have listened to them on VMU as an audio type of thing.
How many of those have you listened to?
Probably, I would say, four to five. And then I've attended City Council meetings in Toledo in the past.
Mr. LaRoe?
I'd say I've been to at least five this year alone. I couldn't give you an exact number, but I definitely, at least, I have a dozen.
Have you been to any BPA meetings?
I have not attended, but again, I have watched on VMU.
I've been to two, but I watched them on VMU, I do.
I have not, but I actually, going through research today, I see that that's actually a pretty important part to not only for public affairs, but what council does as well. So, it's something I'd like to expand into.
Kind of setting that up, because we've been talking about combining the BPA with City Council. That would require a change in charter. Are you familiar with that enough to say, would you support that, or do you have a position on that? We'll start with Jim.
I think we combine them, if it makes sense. Yeah, I think, that's my answer. If it makes sense, we do it.
Michael?
I think it's worth looking into. My understanding is we're the only, or one of the few in Ohio that have both the board of affairs and City Council. If that's the case, why are we the only ones that are doing that? Is it because we've done it for so long? Or is it because that's the best way to do it?
Denise?
I would want to look into it further. I actually studied municipal power about 25-plus years ago during my undergraduate studies. And one of the reasons that we might be unique is the fact that we are a municipal power supplier, where a lot of other communities do not offer that to their citizens. And so, I think we need to really investigate the unique role that BPA has separate from council, and whether it is important that we still have that separate organization to protect the citizens in offering municipal power.
I have a follow-up on that, and we're just gonna run it backwards on this. Currently, the city and VMU share an attorney, they share a clerk. They don't share everything. And one of the things that they don't share, which is pertinent to the city, is that the city has no HR manager, VMU does. And they, my understanding from earlier today is that the original plan was for the city to share a professional HR manager with VMU. Do you have any comments on that idea? Denise?
You know, I think that could be worthwhile. There are, of course, HR is something that many organizations consolidate the services, they even outsource them. I think it is something that really could help our mayor in being able to focus on other things, such as economic development. There is a lot of time and energy that gets put into her job as the HR chief, basically. And so, that is definitely something that would be worth looking into.
What was the question again?
Okay, so right now, the city shares some functions, and they originally were gonna share the HR manager between them and have a professional HR department. The city did not sign up for that, and they're not using the HR manager that, I guess, originally they were gonna share with VMU. Would you be in favor of them sharing that, which could be a possible step, to be fair, to them becoming one, just if they got all of their HR policies together?
Sure. Again, you know, I guess, if it makes sense, you go ahead and you share.
What would make sense to you?
You know, if it's gonna cost more to have two separate HRs, then just combine them and share the one.
Mr. LaRoe? Kind of playing off that. If it works organizationally and fiscally, it makes sense to do it.
All right, this is what we asked the VMU people earlier. If you were the last City Council under the existing charter, and you essentially voted yourself out of a job to combine the two, would you do it? Yes or no? Denise?
That's within the best interest of the community, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Well, how would you define the best interest of the community?
Well, I have three goals for that, but when it comes to this, it would be, are we maximizing our resources, basically? That's what I would look at.
Yeah, I'd say the same thing. We maximize our resources, and, you know, if it makes sense, you know, to go from seven, how many would it be? Seven to four, or seven to five, I believe? From VMU to council?
Well, the structure would be out of debate.
Yeah, yeah.
Of course, it'd be a new charter.
Sure.
I guess I'll follow that up, and we'll start with Mr. LaRoe. Bryan has a strong mayor from the government. If the charter was revisited, most of the surrounding communities have a city executive of some kind and not a strong mayor. Do you have an opinion about strong mayors?
I think the mayor is seen as a strong symbol of the community. I don't really have an opinion either way. But I do think having, you know, a strong mayor for the community is important. I guess that is kind of a stance on it. It's important to the community, it helps us identify.
Denise?
Actually, again, go back to my undergraduate studies and that era. That was the time when Toledo switched from city manager to strong mayor. And I was studying that, I was an intern during the campaigns for the first strong mayor. And I'm a believer in that, because it does give the power to the people. That is who they elect, that is who they want their leader to be, and then it's up to that leader, then, to hire their executive team. And there's still that accountability with the people, and I think that's what is most important.
So, it goes without saying, you have an opinion about strong mayors?
If we were to combine BPA and City Council, I think we definitely have a manager for both of those. And then the mayor would be, you know, she would work on promoting Bryan. You know, the manager would take care of the day-to-day, but the mayor would, you know, promote Bryan.
Is that a strong mayor or weak mayor?
It'd be, she'd be, it would still be a strong mayor position. But we'd have a, you know, manager take care of the day-to-day operations.
I got a question for Mr. LaRoe. You mentioned being maybe a younger voice. Talk about that, maybe some more.
Well, I definitely like being potentially one of the youngest people even in this room. It's intimidating to see this whole process go on and then to put yourself out there. So, if anything, I hope I can be an inspiration for that, and maybe even a voice for that generation.
Just curious. I want to talk about Heritage Ohio. The Heritage Ohio, they came into Bryan last year, kind of doing a survey, how can we identify challenges and opportunities for Bryan? Did you attend that? Were you involved in that? What's your thoughts about that? Were you involved in it, first of all? And then what did you get from it? We'll start with Jim.
I went to the meetings. My wife is actually on the committee that brought Heritage Ohio into here, into Bryan. So, I read the reports, I went to all the meetings. I was kind of disappointed at the end that they just kind of left and it just kind of fizzled. You know, there really wasn't any, you know, additional talk, you know, after they offered their recommendations, you know, until they came back and talked to council, you know, a couple weeks ago.
Can you pick up, and can council pick up on that? And what can we do? I know that's coordinated with the Bryan Development Foundation, I believe, in their favor, correct?
Sure, sure. Well, we need to reread the report and, you know, pick, you know, items out that we can actually achieve. You know, that's the thing. There was a lot of items in there, but a lot of them were kind of out of our reach, and they were gonna take time to, you know, do. And I think we need to go through it again. I think we need to revisit it.
What, on those items that you talk about, Jim, what is one that stood out to you that you'd like to see the city, if you were elected, what is one item that you would like to see the city move forward on?
Well, when they were here a couple weeks ago, they talked about, they talked about other communities our size that were having, you know, issues with, you know, lighted buildings or vacant buildings in their downtown area. And they said that some of these cities or communities were, you know, drafting ordinances to actually impose fines on building and property owners. I'm not for that, I'm not against that. But, you know, if the city would move forward on ordinance, I'd like to see, you know, language in that ordinance stating that, you know, the mayor's office, the indoor city council would have at the discretion to not, to actually forfeit a fine to that building and property owner. You know, just to move it forward.
Michael, do you agree with that?
So, I went to both the DART meetings and the council meetings, they were there to go over again the findings from it. I think the blight and the abandoned buildings downtown is a big issue for Bryan, who lose a lot of potential revenue from them sitting empty. I think they could be potential fire hazards. It's likely if they're empty, they're not allowed to go. So, it's probably safe at some point, I think we need to fill in.
Okay. Denise, what's your feeling about that?
I agree with Jim that, not necessarily for or against it, but I think that we need to not be afraid to use our legislative authority, that we can enact ordinances that are carefully construed, so that we are protecting our stakeholders, but at the same point, holding people accountable. And that's, and as far as Heritage Ohio as a project and a consultant, I did attend one of their presentations, and, you know, I think, they're not here to do the job for us. So, it is up to us to, you know, pick up the ball and run with it. And they did offer a lot of good insight.
All right, so y'all gave very good politician answers to that. But we're gonna have a yes or no question. We're gonna start with Jim. Under any circumstance, would you support fining vacant building owners?
No.
Yes or no, Denise?
I would.
Mr. LaRoe?
Ask it one more time.
Under any circumstance, look, whatever the legislation is crafted, would you support fining vacant building owners?
Absolutely.
Fair enough.
How does the city do on, let's kind of roll it into residential properties, even commercial properties. How does the city do on maintaining, helping people to maintain their buildings, fining them, that kind of thing? What's your thought about that? Should they step up enforcement? Is it about right? Denise?
I think there should be a little bit more enforcement. You know, the way that it's typically done is, yes, there's enforcement and there's fines, but you're given opportunities, you're given warnings, you're given compliance opportunities, you're referred to resources, where you can apply for some special grants or funding and things like that. So, the fine, the accountability only comes after you've been pointed in the right direction. And I don't, I think that we need to do more of that.
Jim?
The, when I talked to the city engineer, he was stating that there's a land bake out there, you know, to take care and help homeowners, you know, clean up their properties and these blighted properties on their gateways.
Is it a problem in the city?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, your city could do more?
Our city could always do more. Absolutely.
I think we can all agree that we hate when we drive down Main Street, or High Street, or any street for that matter, and we see trash on the side of it.
You know, that's a billion things, that's where I was gonna go next. The city is in the trash business. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. And it's unusual. Like, most of our surrounding communities do not have the city in the trash business. The trash is collected by a contractor. And one of, are you in favor of the city managing their own trash collection? Jim?
I think it comes, if it comes down to a budget issue, I think we should look at external trash companies, you know, to take care of that. But, you know, if we do that, we still need to keep big trash pickup day. You know, because the last thing we want is a mattress on the side of the road on Main Street going on Main Street. So, we still need that, because some of the homeowners cannot, they don't have a way to take that to the dump.
Michael?
I'd like to go back just to the previous topic real quick. We have ordinances in place for trash pickup. We have ordinances for how tall our grass can be. I think we need to do a better job at enforcement. And if we find that the ordinances aren't effective, we need to find creative ways to make them effective. At the same time, with some of these structures that are becoming ISOs, we need to help find and publish, like, the resources to help low- and medium-income families make repairs or move towards these mandated ordinances as well. We shouldn't just abandon them because we're afraid to, or we don't really look at them.
I want to ask just a quick follow-up.
Denise has had a chance on the trash.
Yeah, go ahead. I want to follow up with Denise. Go ahead, Denise, I'm sorry.
The trash business. You know, it's a budget issue, it's a financial audit issue, and as long as it is not a burden on the city, and we are maximizing the service that we're providing to our citizens, then we stay in the business.
Enforcement of these rules or issues or what we're talking about, is probably going to take additional staff, what you're talking about, Michael. And, you know, when you said enforcement of tall grass, building, blighted buildings, additional staff, again, is that something that you're in favor of adding additional staff, which is to add more money to the budget?
It all depends on the budget. Unfortunately, where I sit now, I don't know too much about the budget, but I know a high part of that is employee-based. So, maybe adding more employees isn't the best answer for it. But I think that's something, as a council, we would have to go to and talk about.
I'm the same way. If it's, if we don't have the money and the budget, we just do what we're doing now and try to keep up on it.
And try to enforce it?
Sure. Yep, yep.
Denise?
I think we look at other ways that we could do it. You know, this is one area where I think I have a little bit of an advantage in terms of having lived in other communities. I'm not afraid to look at other communities and see how they manage, how they add that staff to do those things. And we look at communities of like size, like demographics, things like that, and figure out, okay, do they, how is it that they've figured out a way to fund code enforcement officers? How is it that they have a second prosecuting attorney that can lighten the load on our city attorney's office? Where do they figure that out in the budget? And we look at those things.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, where I'd like, y'all have got a chance to respond to that one, sorry, I was reading.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Very good. Where I'd like to go next is, one of the things that's been discussed recently is a hotel tax. And there are some lighted hotels in the area that we're aware of, and that might be somewhat of a solution to that. Are you in favor of a hotel tax, yes or no? Jim Cozablek.
I've been told that we, only one hotel in the county can have a hotel tax.
Only one municipality can have it?
Only one municipality.
Yes.
I would be in favor of a hotel tax. Yes?
And my understanding is it involves some conversation with the county commissioners and some negotiation with them. And I definitely, you know, I do travel quite a bit, and it's very unusual not to have hotel taxes. And I think it's something that we should do, and we just need to figure out how to partner up for the betterment of our community.
Mr. LaRoe? I don't know the specifics of what all goes into, like, a bed tax for that. At face value, it sounds like a good idea. It would definitely take some more investigation on my part.
All right, and I'm gonna follow this up. Another issue that relates to public perceptions driving through Bryan is that we have a homeless shelter that actively imports people from Cleo and out of the area, and they're visible on the side of the street. Do you have an opinion about the homeless shelter? Mr. LaRoe?
Honestly, I haven't thought too much of it. It's a good resource to have, so that people in the community, if they need that resource, have it available to them.
Denise?
I think I would like more information in terms of the supposition that they're actively importing folks from Cleo, the basis and kind of a little more facts on that. But we need it.
That's an absolute fact. If you go there and you talk, they're, a majority are not from Bryan.
I'm not from Bryan originally either. I guess, that's a little flip, but, you know, there's a whole lot of things that bring people, and they, you know, they are a family shelter, they are working to help people transition into stable housing. So, you know, I certainly don't have a problem with that.
Do you have a problem with it on Main Street?
On Main Street? Yeah.
Okay.
I have a little problem with it being on Main Street, but, you know, when I went through Leadership Williams County, we actually toured the facility. It's a very compassionate facility. I would rather, you know, if, I don't agree with importing people from out of the county to Bryan. And I, again, I don't, I don't like it being on Main Street, but it's needed, and I think we're compassionate to the community.
I believe, too, you said you were in favor of a hotel tax, right? Would you apply the hotel tax to the homeless shelter? Yes or no?
Apply the hotel, you mean, charge them the tax?
Yep.
I don't, no, that's not really, I would say no, it is a short answer.
I would definitely need to investigate more. Most likely, no.
That's a good politician answer.
I'm learning. Well, going on that same premise there, because you're talking about homeless shelter, you're also talking about the housing issue. Bryan has a housing problem, a very large housing problem. We don't have a place to put people. If you were elected to council, how could you make a difference in that housing issue? What would be one of the things that you would recommend for council to do? Start with Michael.
So, I believe that it is downtown, there's all the upper-level buildings there. I think we can house, like, up to, like, 200 residents, potentially, if we converted those into apartments or condos, or something of that sort. I think that'd be a great idea. I think it helps bring more people downtown. It's potentially gonna bring a younger community that doesn't want to purchase a house right away, maybe fresh out of college, or just starting a family. I think it'd be great for us. And I think there's, there's other things for housing that could be developed that we could look into as well.
When you say that it'd be great for us to do this... When you say that it'd be great for us to do this, as a council person, would you support it with tax abatements? Would you support it? How would you support this?
I'm not entirely sure, um, having not sat on council and really went through the wringer on it. But I think we'd have to be open to any possibility for how we could do that and what ultimately is best for the community.
Me? Uh, if I was on city council, I'd want to talk to builders, uh, investment groups, you know, outside the county. Uh, you know, currently, the city offers, uh, tax abatements for, for new builds, uh, you know, for industry and so forth. So I think that we could take that tax abatement and put it towards, uh, you know, uh, building condos, building apartments, uh, you know, and so forth. Uh, I, I, I think WECO said we need, what, a hundred and fifty to two hundred housing units? You know, to, to stain, you know, what, what is coming in and, and, and the job opportunities that we have in Brian.
There's a couple of vacant school sites. Uh, used to be schools. Been any discussion there?
Well, we need to let Denise answer that question. She has heard of the housing issue, right?
Right.
Yeah, we, we all get ahead of ourselves, don't we?
We do. Well, and I think on council, um, you know, we do have, um, some restriction on what we are able to accomplish, um, in our legislative function. But I think that there are two ways that we can help the community to facilitate new housing. Uh, definitely the downtown, many other communities that have, are able to redevelop loft-style apartments and things like that. It's very common to, uh, do tax abatements for that, and it has been successful. So that is something we would definitely want to investigate modeling after. And, um, you know, we have an advantage, um, with our municipal utilities and our low, um, utility rates. It's really about, you know, marketing that and helping, um, find ways, um, to partner with WECO, to partner with, um, Mommy Valley Planning, to Mayor, um, Housing, um, Committee. Uh, there's a lot of folks that we wanna partner with to really get that marketing piece done. And then the other issue is those blighted properties. Um, if we are holding people accountable and raising our housing stock, it's going to help, because, you know, we're looking, I know there was, um, there is the one development that was looking at some new senior housing that was going to be going in. Well, as those folks transition into the senior housing, then that can make available housing stock. I mean, it's kind of short-term, long, you know, long-range planning that we can do there. And, um, some of the properties, um, I recently had occasion to walk up South Lynn and over, um, to an appointment, and the sidewalks were terrible. And they were clearly not owner-occupied properties. Okay? So that's where we really need to kind of look at how enforcement can help us, because historic homes, older homes, they're very appealing to some younger folks if they're well-kept and if the properties are maintained. So I think that that's something that we need to really look at that enforcement piece.
It's interesting, because, uh, when I lived in a community before, they, Troy Isle, they basically forced people to fix their sidewalks in front of their house. Would you favor that, Denise?
You know, I lived in communities that did that as well. That was all, it was expectation, absolutely. And, and when the way they did it though, is they would do it as an assessment, okay? And if the city is doing it as an assessment and they are contracting for, um, a good price then, you know, because they're doing it a whole lot of sidewalk at a time, it actually can be much more economically feasible for people to get that sidewalk fixed. That was the, um, way it was done in the city of Toledo.
So you would support that in Brian?
I would.
Sidewalk enforcement, Jim?
Sidewalk enforcement? Yeah. Sure. Absolutely.
It's on the books. Sorry?
Yep.
Didn't mean to cut off, but it is. It's on the books.
You know, I, I agree. I agree.
We haven't done it, you would be in favor of that?
Yep.
Mr. Laurel?
Concrete's expensive. So I would like to see, I mean, in an ideal world, the community, the community come together and the city come together on that, come up with some sort of compromise, whether it's on cost of material or labor. We don't wanna put too much pressure on any one side. We have to work together for that.
Is that a no or a yes?
I'd be for some sort of fixing of the sidewalks.
Do assessments, perhaps?
Sure.
Okay. Um, whatever vacant site, used to be Lincoln School, and some people would ask, why don't we, uh, you know, it's, the school has given it to the city. Would you be in favor of doing anything with it besides open space? Who's starting?
Uh, Jim. Some of them.
I, I'd like to see a park there. I, I think, uh, I don't know if we're able to put in apartment buildings there. No?
The, the, the city, you would have to give it back to the school, the school would have to auction it.
Gotcha.
They could do it for part of it, probably.
Sure.
Like half or something, but.
Open space, dog park, uh, you know, something for the community to use.
Denise?
I think we need to investigate both avenues. Um, I think a lifestyle type of town home-type housing could work there, but of course, there are some, um, hurdles that we'd have to navigate. Um, I do like the dog park idea, that is something that I think, um, would be appealing to a lot of, uh, folks. I don't know if that's the location for it per se, um, because that location does have, um, some advantages, um, in terms of housing.
Mm-hmm.
I've learned quite a bit about the Lincoln Park today. It is my understanding that we aren't able to put apartment buildings or any sort of housing there. Not to say that if it goes back to the, yeah. I'm a little bit partial to it, 'cause that park is technically my backyard. But I'd love to see any sort of open space. I love that there's a playground back there now, although it could use a little bit of upkeep. I'd like that dog park idea, I think that'd be great for it. And the location being next to downtown is ideal for it.
All right. I'd, I'd like to move the conversation just a tiny bit. This is not a question that you're allowed to weasel out of with your answers, because it's, it's my experience, nobody runs for office and puts themselves through this unless there was something that they wanted to change, or there was something that they thought somebody did wrong, or it's something they thought that they could bring to the community. And, and I want one issue from each of you. It could be as simple as you want trash day moved to Tuesday on your street, but I want some. And we'll start with Denise.
Wow, because actually, um, I have said again and again and again, every time I'm having conversations with people, I don't, um, have any issues, I don't have an agenda. Uh, because I don't believe that's my job in this position. And I think I can fairly make that statement as a lawyer. Okay? Uh, when I'm representing a client, their issue does become my issue. Okay? So in this case, it really is about representing the issues for the Brian citizens individually and collectively.
That's great. So you've talked to a bunch of Brian citizens?
I have talked to-
So which is their, their issue that you are going to bring to council or?
Bring, well, I will say the sidewalks and enforcement was one that kind of I made notes of and, um, definitely thought I would bring that up. But I think for me, if I have to pick kind of an issue, um, that's one, that aligns with my goals, and that would be outreach and empowerment. Um, making sure that people feel heard, they feel connected to the city, that's something that I really ran across, um, in every conversation. Um, you know, who's on council now and things like that? Um, so that is my number one goal, is, this is, you know, an age of communication and information, and we've got folks that don't know how to find their resources, don't know what they are, don't know that you can, um, make a report about barking dogs. And I'm not necessarily saying that that's the best thing for folks to do, but, um, they really need to know, um, who's on their side, who their voice is, who is their advocate. So that would be my number one issue.
Mr. Laurel? What's your issue?
What's my issue? Um, I mean, I do have one goal. It's to, if I get elected, to leave council and the community better than the first day I took office. If I had to pick just one issue that was probably most important to me, it would probably be just bringing younger people back to the community. I think there's a lot to be had from having them in the community, um, and it's what's gonna propel us to a successful future.
If you had to look at other communities of our size, what do they do to bring in young people that we don't? Or, or have them come back after college? This would be a good.
I think it depends on what the exact demographic we wanna bring back to Brian is. We have to have things to do. So, you know, small businesses, entrepreneurs, starting up something to give a younger generation, older generations, anybody for that matter, something to do is gonna keep people here.
I mean, we've got like a, what, four percent unemployment rate right now, so it's not like that we have a lack of jobs exactly. What actually would draw people to come back after college?
Well, I'm saying entertainment. Not, not necessarily just, you know, having a position filled.
What could you do on council to encourage entertainment?
I'm not sure.
All right, Mr. Goesel, then?
Uh, I wanna make Brian open. Uh, I want to, uh, I, I, I don't have an agenda.
I don't trust anybody that doesn't have an agenda.
Nope, nope, I, I don't. Uh, you know, the, the one issue that really bothers me is, uh, the city of Brian is not a, you, a good communicator, uh, with the citizens. I think we're not transparent. Uh, you know, the reason I say that is, uh, you know, if, if you get on Facebook and you search for City of Brian on Facebook, we don't have a Facebook page. You know, we're nonexistent. Uh, so that would be the one thing that I, I'd like to see happen, is, uh, if the, if the city had the money, we would hire a, uh, a media director or a, uh, communication director, you know, to, you know, put what's going on in Brian. Bring, bring people to Brian. You know, that's my whole thing. I wanna bring people to Brian to, you know, live, work, and play. I mean, that's my only issue. We need to make Brian look open.
You broached that subject, let's start with Michael. Um, how does the city do with transparency? What can they do to improve it? Did you mention some things?
Yeah, I definitely think that Brian has a communication problem. It's definitely an area we could improve on, um, not only with citizens, but like with our departments as well. If we can communicate better and all kind of get in the same, like, direction and move towards a common goal, we're gonna have success for it.
Jim mentioned a Facebook page for the city. Do you back that? As a civic idea?
Yeah, absolutely. Anything that, I mean, if we have a, yeah, a marketing director, again, it goes back to the budget, and we have to make it work somehow, if that's the route we're gonna go. But some sort of coordination would be great.
And Jim talked about it, I think you mentioned it a little bit, you wanna expand on that?
The-
Transparency.
Transparency, yeah.
Media and stuff.
I mean, really, just using technology, I mean, that would be the number one thing. And, and relationships, you know, it's about, um, connecting with people. I mean, it's, you know, being present, doing both.
And I wanna say, this has been going on for a while. This isn't due to the current, you know, administration, this happened, you know, years ago, and, and, uh, social media's free. You know, Twitter's free, Facebook's free, Snapchat's free, Instagram's free. You know, we need to use all of these sources, you know, to do what we can to get the word out, not in Brian, but out of the county and out of the state.
Maybe that's a good thing about new candidates, new ways of looking at things. Yeah.
I like free. You know?
Yeah, you say free, but I think all of you almost have agreed that two full-time new city positions, 'cause you need a code inspector and you need a marketing director. So the, is that, would you all agree that you just said that?
I mean, you know, I think we do have some staff that are already, um, assigned to do some of those duties. It really might be a study to figure out, you know, what are we doing that can give them more time to be more efficient in some of their job responsibilities that they already have, that maybe can free up some time. There, there's a lot of different ways to look at it.
Jim?
I think, uh, even though we do hire a marketing or media director, we're gonna get that money back in, you know, revenue from bringing people outside the county and outside the state tenfold that.
In terms of sales tax?
Sales tax, uh, yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Laurel?
I mean, it's, it's not a yes or no answer.
It is.
You have to, you'd have to look at the budget, but like Denise said, I think you could potentially look at the efficiency of some of the employees we already have and see if there's better uses of time towards that. And like Jim said, we could get a potential return on marketing from sales tax.
You all weaseled out with, that you would look at the budget. Is there any inefficiency that you know of in the Brian budget right now that should be addressed? Jim goes first.
I, I have not seen the budget, so I don't know.
You see city trucks drive around town every day?
Sure.
Have you seen anything you think could be done more efficiently?
Not right offhand.
Denise?
I would not be able to identify anything, but I would, um, you know, one of the first things that I would do is spend some time looking at those budget items and, um, talking to the, um, directors and kind of figuring those things out.
Without looking at the budget, I can't point out anything in particular, but I will say, I think the department heads have done a pretty good job, at least from a citizen's standpoint, of using their time and our tax dollars effectively.
Just, you know, going back to the else, you'd have to look at the budget and understand the budget, which is fine. Something that you can look at and understand right now is the city charter, because we are a charter city. Have any of you read the city charter? Like, it's Chopin's? Have you all ever seen his copy of the city charter?
Part of it.
All right.
Parts of it.
Okay. It has literally your job description in it, but it also has how all this stuff works. Is there anything in the city charter that you would change? Mr. Laurel?
I need to study up on it more. I actually started reading it the other day, thought I was almost done with it, and was only about halfway. So there's definitely more to be read.
Denise?
I definitely wanna look into it further. Um, there was nothing that jumped out at me, but I, I think that, um, when you're talking about a charter, you know, it's akin to the Constitution. You don't want to just look at making changes of the charter, you know, willy-nilly. That's, um, you know, that's our living document, um, and, you know, it's, um, it, it needs to be, um, carefully looked at before you make a charter change.
Yeah, I would also wanna look at the charter more and, uh, you know, go by line by line and, uh, you know, see what we can do to cut costs.
We have some great, um, sites, development sites in Brian. One on the north side, one on the east side. I believe that they're shovel-ready as much as possible. Um, is there anything else we can do to market those? Uh, sorry, Michael?
So, they're not filled, so obviously there's more that we can do to market them. What that entails, I'm not a hundred percent sure on, but they, my understanding is they are shovel-ready. It sets us apart from other communities that don't have large lots, like the North Industrial Complex. We just, I don't know how we get the word out more. We do have a website for it, I've seen posts on Facebook, I've shared them on my campaign page for them. We just need to keep talking about it.
You know, um, there's definitely people that are, um, the experts in that area. That's not our job as the council people, our job is to help them if they, you know, if they need something, um, but, you know, I think it goes back to where are they gonna put these employees? Where are they gonna live? What are we gonna offer them? You know, that's, that's our job. That's what, you know, what we can do.
Uh, she said part of my answer with, uh, you know, bringing people, you know, having housing for these people. Uh, but I think it all starts with promotion. You know, we need to look open. You know, WECO does a good job, uh, the city of Brian does a good job marketing, but we still need to have our own marketing and media, so, you know, when these people from these companies are looking to see what's going on in Brian, they, uh, they might say, hey, this, we're, we're doing stuff right. We're open, we're, we have entertainment districts and so forth, and, and they'll wanna move.
I'm gonna ask a question here. Uh, in one of the previous sessions that we've had today, one of the candidates said that he sat down with the superintendent of the schools and the treasurer of the schools. Have any of you sat- Have any of you sat down with any of the department heads or the mayor and discussed anything that's going on in the city currently or what you might expect if you were elected? So, Michael?
I actually sat down with the mayor this morning and talked about the budget a little bit. Um, I would like to speak with the superintendent of the schools. I'd love to see, back when I was in high school in 2010, we had a trust class. It was a community-based service, uh, class for credit. My understanding is they've gotten rid of that. I'd love to see something like that in place again. Get volunteers, make it for a grade. It's going to help get that younger generation's, I guess, more skin in the game, more pride in the community. They're going to help out, and that's a big problem that the community has is lack of volunteers.
Have you talked to the department heads? Any of the department heads?
I tried to talk to Mr. Whelan today, but he was out of engineering. I did talk to Andy though.
Okay. Jim?
I had a long discussion with the mayor. I had a long discussion with, uh, the city clerk, and I had a long discussion with Brian Whelan. And, uh, what I found is our, our budget's been stagnant for the past five years. You know, revenue has not went up. Uh, you know, we, the city needs to find additional revenue sources, uh, you know, to, you know, raise the budget, be able to do more, you know, in the city of Bryan.
Any ideas on what those revenue sources might be?
More entertainment downtown. You know, bring the younger families to Bryan. Uh, if people, if we can get the younger generation to live in Bryan and work in Bryan, there's tax revenue. If we, if we can retain the people we have now to start families and work in Bryan, that's additional tax revenue. Because right now, when people work outside of Bryan, we don't get the full, uh, income tax off of them. It's, it's cut in half. So, our goal is to get people to live in Bryan and work in Bryan. I think that's going to be our, our easiest way to, you know, raise the budget.
Denise, how about you?
The question was, I heard the answer, sorry.
It was a lot, it was a lot of questions.
Have you had an opportunity to sit down with the mayor? Or, or, and/or department heads? And, and what have you gained or garnered from that?
Well, I have not yet had the opportunity to meet with department heads, however, that has been on my running to-do list. And I have spoken to the mayor, um, as far as the school superintendent and, um, other, um, community leaders. So, you know, I moved here four years ago. I, we were a family with sixth grader, um, and an eighth grader, um, coming into Bryan schools, coming into the Bryan community, looking at, are we going to live in Bryan? Um, it was a choice, um, by far. There was a lot of factors. I interviewed for a job in Perrysburg with my husband taking the job here. We chose Bryan. We looked at, do we want to live in Archibald? Do we want to live, you know, where do we want to live? We chose Bryan. At that time, I reached out to Ryan Miller, who was on school board at the time, and said, sell me on Bryan schools. I'm coming from Upper Ireland. Okay? I mean, I was coming from the cream of the crop in the state of Ohio, uh, but we knew the whole big picture that Bryan offered. And so, I'm actually kind of, I hear all this, well, we need entertainment district, we need things to do. Do we? Because I, I mean, every day, every weekend, there's stuff going on. And maybe it is just that marketing piece, that media piece, and maybe it's the younger folks, uh, but I know young folks that come here to do things. Um, I see younger folks. I mean, we've had change in the last four years with the addition of Cora and growth of Father John's, but there's always arts, music. I mean, there, there's a lot of things happening. I guess my question is, what do we want happening? But I have spoken to some people and, you know, I definitely, to answer the question, but there's been a lot of other comments made, and I just kind of wanted to throw that out there.
At least two of you keep bringing up entertainment, okay?
Yeah.
And essentially, there being, for lack of a better word, a competitive market between us and other small towns in the area. Or medium-sized towns, right? You, you know, Defiance has food trucks, I think, every Friday. It's a cool thing, I guess. You don't do that. Uh, Defiance is a downtown alcohol area where you can go from, you know, walk through their part of the beer. Are you in favor of adding those kinds of things? Those are going to be decisions that face council in your term. Absolutely. Denise?
Well, I do, um, think in the summer, uh, we, you know, we do get a couple, we don't have an event with food trucks per se, but we do have, yeah, I mean, there's, there's some things here and there. Um, sure, I mean, there's definitely more we can do and add. As far as the, um, the Dora, um, downtown outdoor recreation area, or designated, not downtown, everybody always calls it downtown, designated outdoor recreation area. Uh, I think we need to really look at what the purpose of it is and how it works and how it could burden, um, the city as well or, um, community. You know, that, that idea, um, kind of took flight in places like Potten Bay, you know? If you know how Dora works, it doesn't, it, it doesn't necessarily, um, there aren't necessarily other ways we couldn't achieve the same thing. You know, we could have a special night, we can have a, a beer garden night, like what we did with Oktoberfest and things like that, because really, the cup, you can't keep it while you're in the establishment. You have it while you're walking from Cora to Father John's, and then you have to dispose of it. So, you know, I don't know that that's necessarily the answer, um, you know? Do we need a dance club, baby? I don't know. But, um, that's, you know, I think we need to look at how it's drawn and make sure that we're really benefiting our community.
You okay in general with the, with the idea?
It's fine if it's really, um, if it's not going to be cost prohibitive, you know, there's going to be, have to be special trash, there's additional cleanup, um, you know, there's safety issues. Um, we've got, you know, a U.S. highway that goes right through the square. I don't want someone stumbling with a cup right out into that.
Defiance has too, and there's, and you're pulling me as well. Jim?
Uh, I heard, I heard about the door proposal, uh, a couple months ago, talked to committee members and so forth. Um, you know, being a resident of Bryan for 45 years, I've seen Bryan kind of go from way up here, uh, to the middle. This is lower, so we're right in the middle right now. Uh, I, I've, I did research on the door. Uh, I've read what other communities are going through, and what I've heard is, it, it generates revenue for their downtown. Uh, it, it makes a, or it creates a new energy for the downtown. Uh, it brings additional people to downtown and it helps downtown businesses. What does Bryan need at this point? We need more people downtown. We need more revenue downtown, uh, to help our downtown businesses grow. Uh, and we need that energy. Uh, you know, if elected to city council, you know, this came up, I'd want to have some serious discussion, uh, to see what the, the good things are, the bad things are. Uh, but I, I know in the proposal, uh, for cleanup-wise, uh, the establishment is in charge of cleaning up in front of their storefront and I think, what, two, three over-ish? I think is what it was, uh, front and back. So, the cleanup, I don't think is going to be a big deal. But I think it needs to be looked at. It needs to be talked about. Yeah?
Mr. LaRoe?
With any of these ideas, you have to look at the pros and cons. These are progressive ideas. These are, I think, in my opinion, good ideas and something that the community and Bryan should embrace.
I guess, uh, you know, you, you mentioned that we have a festival in the summer, the Jubilee. And I guess, starting with Mr. LaRoe, going backwards to me, um, what's your opinion of the Jubilee and is it good for Bryan?
It's a staple of the community. I know there's, there's a lot of animosity towards it. Personally, I love it. I think it's great that the community comes out, not only Bryan, but surrounding community comes here. I think what they did last year, cutting it down to three days, it worked and I, there's a lot of good buzz that I heard from it. I enjoyed it. It helped that we had nice weather. You don't have everybody clogging up town for an entire week. It's condensed to three days, including the weekend.
Jim?
Uh, for the past seven years, I have helped organize, set up, run, and tear down. It takes like 80 hours out of my week, plus I work, right? Doug Hanna and I sat in the back of the chamber and we actually came up with a three-day thing, you know, proposed it to Dan and whoever. Uh, I think it's, again, it's, it's like Michael said, it's a staple in Bryan. Uh, you know, it's been going on for a long time and it brings people downtown. Uh, you know, the, the businesses, you know, some of them have an issue with it. Uh, they should run specials. You know, we always offer them to have booths, you know, around, around the square and so forth during Jubilee. Uh, some of them take up on that, some don't. But, uh, I think it's a really good event and we've gotten the, uh, the right company to actually bring in top-of-the-line rides now, and, uh, we've got the band now. So, uh, yeah, I think we, it is, if we move forward, it's going to get better. But it's exhausting.
Denise?
So, um, I too have been going to the Jubilee for over 40 years. Um, I mentioned I'm not from Bryan, however, I'm eighth generation in Williams County. Uh, my grandparents are from Eden and I spent every weekend with them as a kid. Well, every other. Spent a week's vacation, um, when I was 14 in Bryan. Um, if you were a lifeguard at Eastern School, I had a crush on you. Don't remember who we are, but somebody who's around 50 years old. But anyway, um, I've been going to the Jubilee that long. I've watched it evolve and, um, that's for everybody that told me to be myself when I was here. Anyway, um, my kids love the Jubilee, um, you know? I do, um, go into work in Toledo part-time in the courts there, and I had a friend tell me, you know, went out to Father John's, check that out, and there was this great festival going on, this carnival. We walked around, we really loved it. Um, so Jubilee really is a staple for Bryan. Um, I think the three-day, um, my kids did kind of complain a little bit, but Jim, I'm all, well, that was the problem. And that's the thing, yeah. But you know what? I'm all for the three days. Um, I did volunteer at the Jubilee a couple years back, um, and helped put together, um, work some shifts with the diaper-changing station that, um, Wesley Church put on, um, to help out some folks that were there. And I think it really, it, it does offer that type of an environment, not just for the businesses to, uh, but the whole community. And I think more, you know, we, we need to support more community organizations having a booth, doing something.
Well, that didn't help me vote any.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're out of time.
So, let me, let me go ahead and, and just read our little statement that we'd like to read. Uh, the questions submitted are not the opinion of the chamber, Bryan Municipal Utilities or the Bryan Times. These questions are submitted by community members and vetted by our panelists and myself. So, just so you know that, uh, we, we do that, so, um, go ahead, Bob.
Okay, so what's going to be a little bit different because Judy Eris is running unopposed, and we said we'd at least let her have a final statement to forgive all of you. So, we're going to move her over here in one of our chairs. But try to, in 90 seconds, tell us why we should vote for you as opposed to the person next to you, starting with Mr. LaRoe, or just go right around.
I'm just going to keep it short and sweet. I said earlier, I have one goal and that's to leave, if I'm elected, better than when I took office. Passionate about the community and I plan to do what is best for Bryan and its citizens. Um, I'm committed to Bryan, Ohio. I bought a home here. I plan to raise my family here. I plan to grow old here and die here. So, if you believe in me and my passion, please vote for Michael LaRoe on November 5th and be part of Bryan's change.
Uh, you know, I've been a, uh, business owner in Bryan for the past 20 years and currently own Fluid Handling Dynamics here in Bryan, which is the Arrow Pump distributor. Uh, I'm a current board member in the Bryan Chamber of Commerce, graduate of Leadership Williams County. Uh, I am an at-large member and executive finance chair for the Williams County Republican Central Committee. Uh, and I volunteer over $200 a year with the Bryan Chamber of Commerce, uh, you know, working all the events downtown. Uh, I, uh, I work with the Bryan Development Foundation. I actually manage the Bard Fountain. I want to thank them for the, the wonderful fountain in their downtown. Uh, I am co-chair for the Christmas decorating committee. Uh, so, you know, I want to work with Bryan, you know, on a higher level to bring more business to Bryan and, uh, and make it inviting for businesses to grow and, uh, families to want to work and play. More information, go to votemcosenplug.com. Thank you.
Denise?
Well, I want to thank, um, Mike and Jim, um, for sitting up here with me as if I'm the host, but really, um, it's just so positive that we have three of us that are here and want to step forward and serve. And, you know, what, how do I say that I stand apart? Because I think that we all offer, um, some great things. And really, um, what I think that sets me apart is the depth of my, um, commitment to Bryan in the four years that I've been here and also the breadth of my experience, um, and my current work on boards that have regional, uh, connections. Uh, I, since I arrived in Bryan, I jumped right in, uh, took our volunteer guardian ad litem program from only a couple straggling volunteers holding on to, um, work for kids, expanded that, got 12 volunteers and handed that off, and it became our new CASA program that's partnered with Henry County. Um, and, uh, you know, that I did within my first year, uh, being here. I have volunteered through Junior Achievement. I've volunteered every opportunity I can, just jump in. I've been appointed to, um, the, uh, be the representative for Legal Aid of Western Ohio and ABLE, which is a 32-county, um, service for, um, the legal rights, um, and helping the underserved and marginalized with their legal issues. It helps seniors, um, and I've ensured that I have looked out for rural areas. And, um, I take my position of being the advocate, not just for all the rural areas, but for Bryan very seriously and have increased, um, some of the services that we've brought back here. I'm president of the Center for Child and Family Advocacy, their board. I serve alongside law enforcement in, um, various region, um, local neighbors, um, and their chiefs and other leaders. And so, it's about digging in here in Bryan, but also building those relationships with our neighboring communities and having that, um, just that ability to form those relationships and be personable and expand that outreach. And so, that's what I think I can bring to this position.
Thank you. Um, it's hard for me to say Judy because, uh, mom, would you like to tell us why you're, why you're running again for another term?
Well, as you know, Dan, this city has been extremely good to our family. Um, and your father was on the AMU and I'm on city council. You're the director of the, uh, chamber, and we have another son who's the director of the Williams County Libraries. So, we give back to the community, and I think that's so important. We have a wonderful, wonderful city here. And yes, we have problems, but we're working at them, and I just feel like I've served four years, I still have things I want to see through and want to see finished, and that's why I'm running for another term. I must say, I am so happy to see the three of you running. It is, it does my heart good to see the enthusiasm and the willingness to step forward because this is not, you're not going to get rich off of this job, I'll tell you. You put in a lot of time and, but it's satisfying because you feel like you're doing something to make a difference. And I think that's so important. Thank you very much for running. Thank you for having us this evening.
All right, great. Thank you so much to our candidates. A reminder that the three of them that are sitting here are, are running for one seat. My mom is running unopposed. Again, it's hard for me to say Judy, I'm sorry. Uh, but, but we thank you all for being with us this evening. Special thanks again to Bryan Municipal Utilities for, uh, being here tonight, the Bryan Times, and also Stony Ridge Winery for hosting us. We really want to thank our panelists, uh, for putting in the time that you did. We, we thank you for that. Election day is November 5th, and we encourage everyone to get out and vote, and like J.B. Orin used to say, vote, vote often. Make your voice heard. Uh, that's the only way we can make a difference in this community. On behalf of the Bryan Area Chamber of Commerce and myself, we thank you for being here this evening and have a blessed evening.